I call it August 25th, 2025, regular town council meeting at six o'clock. A roll call, please. Present?
Present.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Okay, thank you very much. Please join us for prayer and then followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord Jesus, we just thank you for your grace and we ask your presence here this evening. Just as always, Lord, just thank you for being a benevolent God. Just thank you for our town and thank you for the people that work here. We pray for their safety daily. We pray for our guidance on our council. And in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the government of which sustains one nation, under God.
Okay. Motion to amend or adopt the agenda is presented.
So moved.
A motion by Matt, a second. Second by Scott, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved. Approval of amendments submitted by the clerk treasurer also noted upon our website. Got a motion by Scott, a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved. Approval allowance claims submitted by the clerk treasurer also noted upon our website. Got a motion by Scott, a second.
Second.
Second by Terry, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved. Approval payroll allowance documents submitted by the clerk treasurer also noted on the website. Got a motion by Matt, a second.
Second.
Second by Randy, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved. Take a minute to sign those documents here. Thank you. Any comments from the public this evening on our agenda items like we don't? Ordinances and resolutions. Our first ordinance is ordinance 2025-OR-018. An ordinance considering an amendment to the zoning maps of the town of Salisbury, Indiana. Jake, you want to start or anything?
I agree. Meeting August 18th, wherein the plant commission made a favorable recommendation to zone. There are three different small parcels, I believe all the same property owner. 1005 Bean Road, 1117 Bean Road, 1128 Bean Road. And moving it from light industrial as well as highway business to I two heavy industrial for all three parcels. And so that's what we're for you all this evening. And then you all will vote either to adopt or reject the recommendation thereof rezoning of the property.
Okay, all right. As it states in here, as where is on the 18th day of August 2025, the plant commission of the town of Salisbury, Indiana, better known as the commission certified a favorable recommendation to rezone certain properties identified here within 1005 Bean Road. Three different parcels, as Jake stated, from I one light industrial to I two heavy industrial. And 1017 Bean Road partial. From I one light industrial to heavy industrial. And a portion of 1128 Bean Road. From B three highway business to I two heavy industrial. Collectively referring to his properties, see attached today. Whereas pursuant to Indiana code 36-7-4-608, this council may adopt or reject certification from the commission. Now therefore be ordained by this town council of Salisbury, Indiana. The recommendation of the commission to rezone the properties from I one light industrial and B three highway business to I two heavy industrial is hereby either adopted or rejected. This ordinance shall be in full force and effective on passage and prolongation evident by affirmative signatures undersigned and the majority and duly elected serving members of this council. Before we start conversation, both myself and Terry was present for this vote. It was very well described to us of what your intentions was. Mr. LaValle has been a great person to work with. You know, as he's admitted himself, you know, he had a little ups and downs at the beginning, learning. But from where he's originally from, it's a little bit different from a small town community working with us. So, you know, also the landowner, Mr. Pixley was present and also stated that he has enjoyed the relationship and what Mr. LaValle has been able to do. And make things more workable. I know Terry asked a few questions about some landscaping things and stuff like that. And Mr. LaValle also stated that, you know, that was going to be addressed as well this fall. He had a great group of people that brought a presentation towards us. And I think, you know, he's going to clean up this whole area right there, all the way to the petroleum place. They've also already had a conversation with the airport. And so I think that, you know, this is a great opportunity for us to really put that little part of town in our area in a nice, clean looking area state. So Terry, I don't know if you have anything to add first?
No, I was just going to say that his only neighbor is like Brad said, is Mr. Pixley. And Mr. Pixley was here in attendance and shook their hands and he was on board with everything they do. There's no more road frontage along 31 or anything. Everything is along Bean Road. It actually is partial flood plain, is that correct, Charlie? And it's going to be for storage trailers. They're going to blacktop the lot and market and stripe it. One way in, one way out, really minimal evasive. We gave him a favorable nod.
Okay, so I don't know if anybody else had any thoughts?
Yeah, I have questions about it. The, what prompted the zoning change and what's the advantage for them to have the zoning change? They're under light commercial now.
So that actually came from a recommendation from staff. They've got, when LaValle came in, as you cross the railroad tracks on 60 on the Bean Road on the left, they had the first parcel. That parcel, within that parcel, has two zones on it, on one parcel. And he purchased the two parcels next to it that have a different zone. So what he wanted to do was consolidate all of that into one parcel number. So he has one tax bill, what have you. So instead of being four parcels or three parcels, it would be one giant parcel. So I recommended before he do that, it would be best practice to rezone them all the same. To have the same zone designation for all the parcels. And then once you get through that process, you can go through to the county petition consolidation of all of the different parcels into one, into one piece.
So I think you read off three addresses that were, and the reason I'm asking the question is, sometimes when you change that, I mean, I guess my first question, second question is, the Bean Road is still maintained by the county?
Correct.
So we're not maintaining the road. Sometimes under those two, and I'm not sure about this, does it change the weight restrictions for what they can haul in there? So they're still restricted to 8,000 pounds?
Whatever the classification of the road is, it doesn't impact that.
So I guess the trucking company is, that's who we're talking about on the corner?
Yes.
So it doesn't change the weight restrictions of them?
No.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? All right, with that, I ask for a motion for a, either a favorable or a rejected motion.
I'll make the favorable.
Okay, favorable motion by Matt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Terry, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor for a favorable motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody for a rejected? All right, five zero, thank you. Want to wave a single more time?
Oh, wait, the second reading.
Got a motion by Matt, a second.
Second.
Second by Randy, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved. Motion to approve ordinance number 2025-OR-018. An ordinance considering amendment to the zoning maps of the town of Salisbury, Indiana.
So moved.
A motion by Terry, second by Scott, all in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay, motion approved, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you guys and Terry for filling in for me while I was gone a couple of weeks ago. So appreciate everything you all did and discussed. So I got a feeling that this ordinance 2025-OR-019, ordinance amending chapter 51 garbage and refuse, the certification ordinances of the town of Salisbury, Indiana, is our next ordinance of recommendation. Jake, do you have anything that you want to add?
I'm actually going to take this from Charlie, bringing it forward, there's two things you're going to have to consider.
So as part of your all's workshop and ongoing discussion within that, I stated I would bring forth an ordinance related to that. So page one talks about what your current structure is, monthly charge of $10 per container. You have the option of purchasing two cans for a dollar amount, $75. So with that on page two, per our conversation, we talked about setting out the monthly service charge for the town per container with a maximum of two containers. And then section two, which is 5104, replaces the $75 and basically just lists out equates to the actual cost, including freight. If you go down to section five, talks about the date of effectiveness. So again, per our last conversation, I thought you have a draft of ordinance related to that for your review and discussion. I just need to know what you need from me and what discussion you want to have as part of this. I believe at the last meeting, it was discussed at the $15 per can rate. Other communities, talked to the mayor of Charleston, they're charging $20 a can. Again, this is all based on the costs. On one, one lease, we would keep the current trash truck, pay one lease until June of next year, at which point we would look at adding a, we would extend, we would basically sunset that lease for the auto car and look at re-upping for a new lease at that time in June, instead of carrying two lease payments between now and then. So just need to know what you need from me and what discussion you want to have.
Thank you also from your study and your cost analysis or anything, was it 1439, is that what?
1351.
So. I'm glad that you all did have a conversation and talking about, you know, the $15 so per container and the maximum of two containers. I don't know if anybody else has some other conversations or some other thoughts about it. I mean, I think that in all fairness, I think that we could read at one time and then I guess we allow the public to make any thoughts or considerations unless you all discussed that at the last meeting.
Like, when was the last time?
2017.
That's 2017. Yeah, so keep in mind, this, this $10 per can fee is not just for that can. It also encompasses disposal of trash collected, disposal of yard waste that we do bi-weekly until the fall, we pick up weekly. And then you all added a large item pickup, so all of that is included from an expense perspective into our disposal fees.
And also the spring and summer cleanup as well.
Correct.
So basically you added any quality you added these large removal items, they pay nothing, so they just call and say, hey, I've got a washer and dryer for my house.
It's all included within their $10.
Matter of fact, probably one of the greatest additions during my time to the town.
Pretty hundred percent.
So they don't pay for that, they don't pay for yard waste. In eight years, this is the only increase we're ever going to.
Correct, all the items are included in the $10 a month fee because you have to be a sanitation customer to take advantage of the large item. And then yes, the eight years, there's been no adjustments.
And then we operated this year, projected a $300,000 deficit, is that correct?
No, that's if we had an addition. For a calendar year, it's 162,000, 163,000.
$162,000 loss this year.
Yeah, like I said, we've hired three employees, we've added three employees for streets of sanitation as well. That's covering this cost as well, so.
Just like to echo what Terry brought up and, you know, we're not doing this just for grins and giggles. There's a reason we're doing it because we're operating at a deficit. And I think, you know, people in the public, they need to know that, that we can't continue to go forward the way we are. So we have to make some changes and, you know, I think there was a different figure between 10 and 15 dollars.
There was 1417 will get you pretty close to a break even. It does get you into black barely.
Right.
15 will securely get you into black, black today. There are some increases coming from landfill, but it shouldn't eat into it that much.
The rate increase, if it was effective today, we still won't be whole at the end of this year, is that correct?
This would be a yes, that's right.
We would be.
We would not.
We not be.
No. So again, look at this as a 12-month period.
Right.
Right, so again, I didn't look at it from like, what would it need to be to get you back into black by the end of this year? This is moving forward. And again, I left this open to where, you know, what's budgeted now is budgeted now. Obviously, I'll set the budget last year for this year, that's where we're operating at. So at the end of this year, you have a $163,000 loss. So again, on this ordinance that it was drafted, what you would need to decide is what you want the monthly per container to be. And then when you want that price to go into effect, if you all want it to go into effect October 1st, you can do that. If you want to go into effect, January 1 of 2026, you can do that. So again, I left that, that's for you all to decide when you want it to go into effect.
My recommendation is $15 per can October 1st of this year.
Just a quick notice.
I know, I don't think so because it's not a fine, I think it's just a fee that's going to be implemented. I think there should be just enough runway to know how people let the changes be paid out.
So to include something in the billing statements for September, that window's already passed. To send a notice to residents, we would have to do a separate mailing.
So you want to move to November 1st?
Again, just so you're aware, typically, I can do buck slips in addition to our, our mailings for our invoicing. It was due last week.
Are you, are you going to put out a quarterly update like you've been doing?
Yes, but that's not going to probably be until, like I said, it won't be until next month, some point next month. But again, the billing statement, and we can include that in there, obviously. You know, it's already been in there once that you will be reviewing this. I think it was in there the very first time, the simple one, I think in March maybe or April. Talking about you all reviewing trash collection fees.
So I amend my recommendation from the $15 per container, but I'll move it to the first day of November.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
Question for Charlie about the, the deficit that we have is 150, 160,000. Does it come from January 1st to now or is it from last year to this date? Annual or?
I figured 12 months.
Okay.
You know, so forecasting through the rest of the year is how, how that's figured.
So just off the top of your head, I don't know if you have the figures, from January 1 till now or from last year till now, what was, what was the total?
I have those numbers off the top of my head.
All you know is what we're short, okay.
I can give you a rough number of what our revenue's been. I have to go back and look at the invoices.
But the revenue at the current rate is not covering the cost of what we're doing, not even close. All right, I just want to make sure everyone knows that, yeah.
Yes, sir. The resident in the town have they choose client account.
No, there are some options for at-home business, and I think the process is they have to submit it in writing to the clerk, it has to be on file to clerk treasurer's office for at-home business operations, as long as they're going to go through zoning, so on and so forth, things like that. But a typical resident, the way our ordinances are written, they can decline service, but they're still going to be billed.
So I think what we also need to know, we're trying to get to just kind of a break even situation.
Absolutely, and I think that's what was discussed during the 2017 council. The discussion was, is that, you know, we're losing money. But then, like I said, we didn't have a workforce like we do since King Salisbury came up about and brought in a whole different direction and a whole lot more in-house involvement in the community. So I think that's another option here. But also, we've always worked underneath, you know, a lapidated piece of equipment. And, you know, now we've realized that, you know, with this equipment, you know, we have expenses.
And this, and to be clear, this does not cover the entire staff of the streets of San Antonio.
I understand that, so.
Basically, two, two drivers.
Correct.
Is what this is formulated under. Disposal cost, packer lease, fuel, maintenance on the truck and two staff, all included within that number.
Okay.
The current packer lease that we have, it's, it's toward the end pretty soon, isn't it?
June of next year as much as.
June of next year, okay. And, and then our plan moving forward is, when we get that one is to, we have three at this point. And then we are going to sell one or take one out of service as a backup. We'll have two and then we're going through a new lease at that point.
So we have one under lease, we have one that we own outright on the side loaders, we have the rear load yard waste truck. The older, the blue truck, Mac, we would do a trade-in towards a new lease.
Okay.
All right, that would be approximately June of this year.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, all right, so with all that said, we are in agreement with the monthly service charge of $15 per container, maximum of two containers. Resident of town of Salisbury has the option of purchasing up to two refuse containers from the town of Salisbury for equal to or not exceeding the actual cost of the container in the town that occurred or acquired and including any freight charges associated with delivery. All other sections of chapter 51 remain unaffected by the ordinance and continue to be in full force and effective. This ordinance shall be effective on its passive prolongation of evident by affirmative signatures of the undersigned majority and duly elected serving members of this council. This order shall be in full force beginning the first day of November 2025, as evident by affirmative signatures of the undersigned as the majority and duly elected serving members of this council. So I ask for motion for that approval. Got a motion by Terry, does a second.
Second.
Second by Randy, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay. Do you want to?
Say, do you want to leave this for the next council meeting for a second reading?
I think we, I think, you know, we've agreed that we would go to practice that. So if someone wants to come and make a comment or whatever, we'll allow them to do that, so. All right, no unfinished business, no new business, general comments from the public tonight? Okay, staff reports, Charlie?
Intentionally working on, still waiting on confirmation, you're back from Baker Tilly on a workshop on September 8th related to water and wastewater rates. So pencil that in on your calendar for September 8th at 5 o'clock. Once we get confirmation on that, we'll give notice and post accordingly. The last meeting, we also discussed service line warranty program. I'm also looking at September 8th for Mike, represented from that company to come down at that council meeting as well to represent that and then answer your all's questions as it relates to the service line warranty program. Food truck Wednesdays this week from 4 to 8 Wednesday, right over here at Wilkerson Park, we have six food trucks, several different ones. The weather is going to be phenomenal, so I'm anticipating and hope for an excellent turnout from the community at large on that. October 4th is the brass rabbit again at Wilkerson Park. I will also be rolling out a program that the parks board approved at their last meeting. I believe September 22nd at Wilkerson Park, partnering with a veterans organization to have a concert and cornhole tournament and so on and so forth over here at Wilkerson Park. So that'll be forthcoming. And then at the next meeting, just, we're getting into fall time, so obviously our fall hydrant flushing program will be usually it's in late October. So I'll get those dates solidified and announce those at the next council meeting as well. Allentown Road Safety Edge project is underway. They got the west side of that project completed last week, finished a little bit of that this morning. And now they're starting on the east side of Allentown with a safety edge project. Anticipate completion here by the end of the week on that project as well.
And also the next meeting, let us know where we can make people aware so they can start planning for the dumpster, fall dumpster rates. Well, I thought that was brought up in conversation, so, okay, all right. Anybody got any questions for Charlie? Okay, perfect. Assistant chief Matt Adams. Thank you, sir. We have our engineering. I did notice, I have noticed a little bit, and I do appreciate this because I've had some people even make some comments. I really appreciate seeing our officers in our neighborhoods. I mean, I've done a fine job of maybe making them a little more aware to, like I said, I've noticed a lot. I've gotten a few texts for some things, so I do, I did want to say that. So I was going to say it at my minutes, but since Council McAvoy made a comment, so I thought I'd fill that in. But we do, I know people sincerely appreciate the neighborhood drifter's, so. Yes, sir, okay.
Yes, sir.
Mike Harris, JTL.
Yes, sir. Sunflower Valley, I think we've got all the low hanging fruit done with the easements. We've got a call tomorrow with IFA, there's four folks that have asked for some minor work as a part of providing easements. We've got to get their sign off on that. And then we will probably send you guys a list of the remaining and ask for some help on getting in touch with these people. Some just haven't responded at all. We've tried evenings, weekends, early in the morning, late at night, we just can't get them to respond. So we'll be, we'll be reaching out for some help with that. Well, that's, that's the next question that we probably need to talk to Jake about is what happens if they don't, if they never respond? And it's, it's actually, it's not Jake, since it's through IFA, Greg Pfeifer's the attorney, if you remember. So we'll have to engage Greg on what happens. Yeah, my opinion is at some point we just go ahead and build it, but that's not what the lawyer says. So we'll have to see what he, what he tells us. I'm not there, I'm not there, yeah, thanks. Service line inventory, that is slightly old data. We're just talking as of today. Um, we're just talking as of today, we are down to 130 meter pits left. Um, so that will be done within about one day. Um, so that will, we'll be done with all the field work and be able to update the, uh, be able to update the documents going up to the state. Uh, 31, the utility relocation, so both water and sewer. Uh, the contractor who is lawyer excavating, they have all of the documents. They have to fill some things out, provide bonds and insurance. Um, we are, uh, we expect to get those back on Wednesday and then we'll immediately issue the notice to proceed. So the, the clock will, uh, the clock will start, it says, wow, that is, should be 8:29, uh, is the date. And then they will, uh, they'll be cleared to start working at that point, should be getting. There'll be a few weeks of time to get things ready. They have to order materials and then they'll be, they'll be ready to go. We'll certainly keep you guys updated on when they plan to start putting shovels in the ground. Uh, the PR and AMP is the same. I think some of that's related to the, to the workshop that Charlie mentioned earlier, the rate workshop. So I think get past that first. Town Center Sewers, um, that, that work continues to move forward. There is a meeting coming up with RDC in the next couple of weeks, trying to get that scheduled um, to figure out how that's going to move towards, uh, towards bidding and construction. And I think the last thing is the, uh, oh, Ivy Tech, um, that's for all intents and purposes on hold, waiting on the condemnation. I know that's in process. Um, and then the CCMG project 2024 dash two, um, final, final pay app has been submitted. So once they get paid, we can close that out and not have to worry about it anymore.
Okay. All right. I think it worked out very well this year.
Yep.
Uh, so appreciate all the hard work.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys.
About to have some.
Quick question, Mike. The, uh, I know Scott always likes to ask the chief or interim chief here about the police department if everything's working good. I just want to ask the questions about the sewer plant. Are you satisfied with where it's at? Do you think it's working properly?
There's some, there's still a few little, I was going to say bugs, which is, there's a few little bugs to, to work out. Um, there's, there's been, there's been a change in what's coming into the plant, unexpected change. So there's having to tweak a few things. Overall, yes, you know, 98% yes. We're actually.
Change meaning, uh, more volume?
Uh, no, different, uh, different constituents coming in, which is not the, the, um, the plant likes everything to be the same. That's the way those, the, the, the bugs like to operate. So when things change, that's, they don't, they don't like that. Um, so working with, with staff, figure out what that is, where it's coming from maybe, and then what can be done about that.
You're just telling me it's a different material than what it should be, something different?
Uh, yeah, different. I wouldn't say what should be, but just different than what was, what the town had seen for years and years.
Okay.
Yeah. In the treatment plant, yes. Actual bugs, yes. Microscopic bugs. They, they like their working conditions a lot.
There's, there's, the other guy's not here, is what I'm saying. Okay, that's, that's all I meant by, didn't mean, didn't mean anything. Uh, I stand corrected, sir. Right. Yeah. I'll try to, I'll try to schmooze it for him.
I, I will keep him going.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much. Uh, Jake? Okay. All right. Uh, this is due to the fact that, uh, there were realignment, uh, the passageway uh, due to some other utilities that were, uh, in, in, in the existing easement. So, uh, there's been some conversation with Lakeside HOA and residents. So, uh, with that, this is the path that we need to move forward with. So I ask for a motion for approval to allow two appraisals to be done on this easement area. So a motion by Matt, the second, second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, same sign, nay. Motion approved. Thank you, Jake. Um, okay. Um. Who wants to go first? Randy, you want to go first?
Yeah, uh, I'd like to apologize for any statements with the police department that's caused any riff or anything. Terribly sorry for that. But at any rate, uh, big, uh, big weekend for Sellersburg. They had the festival in town, well, out of town, but, uh, in the community. Very good. Thank you, Charlie, for that addition. Um, seems like it was, you know, what I hear, it was a huge amount of, uh, participation and, uh, weather was fantastic. The, uh, just, uh, seemed like a lot of, the roads were nice, uh, nice and traveled this weekend. The football game was on Friday and we had some great music in town and, uh, got to enjoy the football game. So the creek came up a little bit short, but it was a pretty good contest. Enjoyed watching that. Uh, got to go up and, uh, win some prizes at the, um, Sellersburg Celebrates. Got to carry them out and, uh, it was, it was a, it was just a great.
What did, the ringing of the bell one, is that what?
No, I had a inflatable alien that I got to carry out. Yeah, yeah, that's what it was.
Sledgehammer thing.
Exactly. I didn't, I didn't do it. I was just a courier for a few stuff. Anyway, uh, it seems like it, uh, came off without a whole lot of incident. But, uh, just, uh, glad it worked out and glad that anybody from Sellersburg got to go and enjoy themselves. And big football game. That was, it was fun. And, uh, just looking forward to the Parks Board with the planning of the Brass Rabbit. That was a huge success last year and, uh, you know, with the weather we're having now, it's basically what they call chamber of commerce weather, you know? So, uh, we're, uh, we're looking forward to events and, um, I think the pool officially closes or the splash pad, uh, next weekend. Is that coming up? So outside of that, uh, again, Mr. Adams, I'm sorry for, uh, making any type of statement that would offend you in any way. All right. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Matt? Okay, Terry?
I just want to congratulate, uh, the interim police chief, McAvoy here. Police chief for the city of Jeffersonville. Congratulations. Uh, if any of you've been driving up and down Highway 60 by Interstate 65, you'll see that our Wawa is very much under construction. I saw two more tanks up there today, so I guess they're going to have all the tanks in the ground. Do we have a completion date? No? Do we have a hopeful completion date? Spring, spring of 26? Okay.
That went that long from McAvoy to buy his, like, on Subway sandwich or?
Maybe now we can get out a parking ticket or something.
Meatball sandwich.
That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilman McAvoy?
Yeah, well, I appreciate the kind words. A lot of work to do. And to give it back to Randy, the seller of himself, every time it's. Good God, we do. I didn't walk out of the event, the incredible aliens in my arms.
Nor, nor did I.
It's nice to see some people tied in, football game, good ride, and everything, like you mentioned. And hopefully this oppressive heat stays away. People been missing my business all these years. This, um, on the east wall, we were excited, we felt a lot of stuff, but, uh, we do people a lot to, yeah, I, I've never believed that it's the government's responsibility to obtain, to provide. So, um, the opposite of, uh, part of the, versus like, you know, one summer or something, it's all descriptions.